Reverend William will lead us in invocation. Remain standing for a place to the flag.
Let us pray. O God, our heavenly Father, from whom cometh every good and perfect gift, we lift up to Thee the voice of thanksgiving. We're thankful for the life Thou hast given us and the service to which Thou hast appointed us, for the knowledge of Thy will and the inspiration of Thy love, for the work we have strength to do, for the truth we are permitted to learn, for whatsoever good there has been in our past lives, and for the hopes that lead us on toward better things. And lastly, may our hearts, our minds, and our prayers be open to the victims of the tragedy that took place in Colorado. We pray for those families and grant peace, love, unity, safety, comfort to all the people of this city, that city, this state, to this nation, and throughout the world. And we ask this in the name of the Father, Son, and the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We're going to ask our city clerk to co-rule for us.
Mayor?
Here.
Mayor President Allen.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Here.
Thank you, ma'am. We're all here except Councilman Waller, and his wife is ill. We don't know the exact condition of it, but he will not be with us tonight. Moving to the next item on agenda, minutes, work session, and regular meeting, June 4th, 12.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any corrections, additions, or comment. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Posting. Minutes are approved. Public comment here. Anyone who would like to take up to three minutes to address us, we'd be glad to hear from them. Anyone? Signal signs, we will move right along to presentation, and we have a very, very special person to recognize. And I'll just let our assistant manager read a little bit about this gentleman, and then we'll talk about him a bit.
Mr. Rayner, an original Montford Point Marine smiles at guests after Congressional Gold Medal presentation ceremony at historic parade in Washington DC, June 28th, 2012. In 1942, President Roosevelt established a presidential directive giving African-Americans an opportunity to be recruited into the Marine Corps. Between 1942 and 1949, approximately 20,000 African-American Marines received basic training at the segregated Montford Point instead of the traditional boot camps of Paris Island, South Carolina, and San Diego, California. These men fought for their country with honor and valor that were hallmarks of the Corps, but they were not treated as equals to their white counterparts at the time. General James F. Amos, Commandant of the Marine Corps, sent out to be, set out to begin the right, this wrong, when he invited the Montford Point Marines to the barracks, August 26, 2011, to be the guests of honor at a Friday evening parade, bringing their story to the national forefront and starting a chain of events that led to this historic day.
Thank you very much. Mr. Rayner, would you please stand, and I have a little presentation I'd like to make to you.
I'll just try.
And if you'd come up front, would you?
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Rayner.
Mr. Rayner, I've been in Wayne County, North Carolina. I grew up in Wayne County.
Mm-hmm.
Lived here for a long time when the military came. I had never met you before, and I can't understand how that happened.
I was looking at you.
He, pardon?
I was looking at you.
Okay, well, now I get to meet you. When I heard about you, I said, are you kidding me, right here in Wayne County, Dudley? Wow. We're so proud of you.
Thank you.
And thank you so much for your service.
Yes, sir. And I thank you.
If there are any comments you'd like to make, please do so.
Well, I came here in 1993. I moved from Wilson, but before that, I've been living in Pennsylvania. And I'm kind of, kind of out and in, you know, Marine Corps. I really like every inch of its service.
I understand why you like it, too. I read that. You like the uniform.
Well...
I read, I read that you like that uniform.
I, I thought it was a nice uniform.
You thought it was.
But the thing about it is this, I enjoyed being in the Marines at the time I was there, and I believe it or not, I'm 82 now, if I had to go again, it would be the Marine Corps.
Wow. Awesome. That's...
But I met quite a few people in Wayne County, and now I'm one of your citizens in Wayne County, and I like it.
You like it?
Yeah.
Well, we like it, too. Again, congratulations, and thank you so much for your service. And this is your... Thank you. Congratulations. Thank you. You got to come see me sometime. We got to talk.
Oh, I'm prepared.
Are you, are you the best lady?
Yes.
All right. Good to see you. Bringing to see me sometime.
Okay.
We got a lot to talk about.
Okay.
Vietnam and other stuff. You'll under, you'll, you'll understand this. A lot of people wouldn't understand.
I'd say brother, I might.
But you'll, you'll understand. You got a picture of all of us?
I was right.
If I can get that photo when I'm...
Let it fall. If you fall, you'll hit real like...
Thank you. Congratulations. If you'd like to stay, fine, but we understand if you need to leave, that's quite all right. We're going to move, understand we have, is Karen Snyder? I have a proclamation here, and I'll make this present, understand you have a few comments you'd like to make about the Day of Caring?
Yes, I do. Basically, I just wanted to say a few words about volunteerism, which is what the Day of Caring is about. And I wanted to say that volunteerism is one of those special components of a strong community, essential to a strong community. And United Way is very proud to know that there are so many citizens in the city of Goldsboro that are so willing to give their time and talents to the benefit of the greater United Way is very appreciative of this proclamation and will work very hard to continue to promote and encourage volunteerism and continue to match agencies in the community that have volunteer needs with those very special and gracious volunteers that can help meet those needs. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Stay right there. I've got, I, you've talked about, well, while we're having this, and I have a proclamation. I won't read it all because you've explained a lot of it, but it is Proclamation Day of Caring Day, and I'll just go down to the meat of it. The city of Goldsboro, North Carolina wishes to thank all volunteers for their time and energy in joining the force to build a better community. Now, therefore, I Alfonso King, here of the city of Goldsboro, North Carolina, do hereby proclaim the first Friday in August, August 3rd, 2012, as a Day of Caring Day, and Goldsboro, North Carolina call upon its citizens to recognize this Day of Caring by offering to volunteer with this or any other worthy organization toward the betterment of your community. Thank you very much, and I'd like to present you this framed proclamation.
Thank you.
And on behalf of all the citizens, I present to this and wish you well, and I promise I'll volunteer.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. Okay. Public hearing.
Mayor and Council, we have one public hearing this evening. I asked Jimmy Rhodes to introduce it for us and go from there.
Mayor and City Councilman, item C, C U 1112, US Cellular. The property is located on the northwest corner of East New Hope Road and Central Heights Road. This is a map showing the location of this property in question. This is New Hope Road that's located here. This is Central Heights Road. This is the property of Jennings Transmission. The property here, the forty by forty foot square, is where the cellular tower is proposed to be located. The applicant requests a conditional use permit to allow the placement of a communication tower within the general business zoning district. The site is currently occupied by Jennings Transmission. It has a total area of approximately two acres. The property would be a forty by forty foot lease area with a one twenty foot tall monopole with no guide wires. The lease site will contain sixteen hundred square feet. The lease area would contain the monopole location, a twelve foot by twenty foot equipment shelter, a future generator pad, and a pad for a future propane tank on the interior of the fenced area. The base of a tower will be screened with an eight foot opaque solid fence constructed of treated lumber. The west side of the tower that is adjacent to a residential developed property that is occupied by a duplex apartment complex will be screened by a fence and also red cedar trees spaced seven foot apart to increase the required screening buffer to a ten foot wide buffer. This is the existing residential structure that's shown on the property. This is the site plan of the property here. This little area here is where the tower is proposed to be located. This is the existing duplex apartment unit that's located here, and this is the property owned by Jennings Transmission. The proposed monopole tower is made of steel and has a light gray color, and it would be designed to support additional wireless users. The tower location is set back approximately fifteen foot from a portion of the adjoining rear property line. The required setback distance is one fifty percent of the tower height, which would be one eighty feet. The applicant is requesting a modification of the required setback distance from one eighty feet to fifteen feet. Submitting engineering data indicates that the structure is designed to collapse and fold inward if it was to fall. The city has received correspondence from Seymour Johnson Air Force Base and NCDOT indicating that they have no objection to the proposed cell tower. The recommendation is no action necessary. The planning commission will have a recommendation for the council's meeting on August 6, 2012.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Jimmy? Thanks, Jimmy. This is a public hearing, as Ms. Row just described. Anyone who'd like to speak, for or against, comment, we'd be glad to hear from. Yes, sir. If you'd please come, and anyone else who would like to come. This is a conditional use, so we'll have to swear you in. Our clerk will be glad to do that. And all those who would like to speak, she can swear you all in at the same time if there's anyone else. Yes.
Um, right, you're ready to start? Um, please write a comment here or after the end of the whole thing. Thank you.
Yes, sir. You'd give us your name and mail-in address?
Hi, yes, good. I'm Dr. Hurrell Roberts. I own the property directly across the street from the proposed tower at 3616 Central Heights Road, which is Central Heights Barbershop, which has been there for forty years. My late mother established a business, Ms. Janie Niels, whom many of you know from her work in the community. I got notification about the proposed tower being built. I did some questions about that, in fact. One is about safety. There's a question I have, something about propane tanks, concerned about that. My other concern is, does your cellular, your cellular have a Plan B? This is their initial plan, but things always go. Most times, most large corporations have contingency plans. Do they have a Plan B? And what might that Plan B include with that Plan B as opposed to Plan A that we currently have? All I received in the mail was the idea of the meeting, of the meeting this evening and about proposed tower. All the nuance of it, I don't have. Mr. Rhodes gave some details that I had not had prior to this time, in fact. So, I'm baffled, in fact, as terms of, I think it's supposed to be a hundred and twenty-five feet tall, I believe. So, my concerns are about accessibility, concerns about safety, my concerns also about property values, how that would be affected as well. Those are my immediate concerns I do have. And I respectfully submit to the, to the mayor, to the city councilmen, and also members of the council, that I assume you've had a chance to review this, but I have serious questions about it myself. And I will take my seat for further discussion. Okay? Thank you so very much.
Thank you, sir. And you, Jimmy and Randy and the people in planning will be glad to sit down and give you the technical details about this.
Very good.
And our planning board, whenever they meet, you can sit in and they'll discuss it.
Okay, fantastic.
You cannot speak unless they ask you to speak.
Should I give you my address and everything? Can I find you with that, please? I live, I live out of, out of the area, but I own the property there. I live at 7519 Oak Valley Lane, Brown Summit, VRWNS, North Carolina, 27214, let the telephone roll. Area code 336, 656, 4944. Fine, thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Is there, yes, we do have, and if you would give us your name and mail-in address as well.
My name is Mike Doran. I represent US Cellular. My mail-in address is 1205 West Leland Avenue, Springfield, Illinois, 62704.
Okay.
I would like to address some of those concerns that the gentleman has.
Sure.
And one point I wanted to bring up is Jennings Transmission owns all those parcels. So, when we talk about setbacks, all those parcels meet the required setback of a hundred and eighty feet. And I don't know if they're, if planning's looking at that as, you know, maybe there's another property line and someone else owns it, but the Jennings own the entire property. I think first to address the, the safety of these towers. They're, they're all, I mean, I can only speak to they're all over the country. I don't know if I'm supposed to address you folks or this gentleman, yeah. But this is a typical area where you would find a cell tower, surrounded by commercial property all the way around. So, and that's where we look, look to, to locate these towers. As far as Plan B, we did have a, we've had a Plan A, and it was a storage unit across the street, and that really could not meet the setbacks. So, we did our Plan B. This is our Plan B. And what this site represents, and I have more information, I don't know if you folks were able to get the book or not.
We had.
The, the propagation maps, the colored green and blue maps, those show our, our connecting sites. So, we are kind of pinned in, going, we need to offload the capacity, and also with the 4G coming up, we need to improve that general area. So, this, what we consider, we consider the site a capacity site. And I've been working on twenty-three different sites in different areas, between, well, other cities, and they are all similarly designed, where there's surrounding sites, and they need one pretty much in the middle. There's not a lot of movement on our, our part. The food line, even across, across the way, even that gets a little bit too close to the adjoining site. So, this, we landed here, one for the zoning, the size of the parcel, the zoning of the parcel, and it is a commercial area. And I think it looks to be, remain that for quite some time. Value of homes, there's never been, and this has come up many times, it's never, there's, there's no statistics that say a cell tower, you know, causes property value to go down or up. They're a positive for the city because they shows that they're progressive and, you know, putting in infrastructure for telecommunications. And as far, again, safety there, we've put them on, if you're speaking of, we're not supposed to speak about radiation and things of that nature, how it affects TVs. We locate these on hospitals, and we don't go above the RF emissions that the federal government gives us, the guidelines we go by. So, there's really no danger. They don't, as far as TVs and other household appliances, they don't affect that whatsoever. They run at too high of a frequency, and, but this particular location is key. I mean, that, there's not a lot of, there isn't a lot of movement here. I mean, that's why we are where we are on this particular property. And it's a hundred and twenty foot. They do collapse upon themselves, so they, I mean, it would take a lot to not, you know, to make this thing go vertical. They just don't, they're not designed to do that.
My question, you say you, you only put them in commercial areas. You don't ever put them in rural areas?
Oh, rural, yeah, but when we're in the city, we, we, I looked, I tend to look at zoning first and look where the proper zoning designation is, and then I will look in that area. And the storage unit was zoned correctly, and so is Jennings Transmission. And we do, in Jennings Transmission, you're going to see it go above, obviously, but the typical human view shed is about, they say, three feet up. So, typically, people are driving, they're not really looking around, looking up. So, and the, the equipment is back behind, it's in this little area where there's, really you can't even see it from the street. It's really not going to be visible. The tower will be a little visible from a distance, but...
Some, some cell towers have decorative type features, you know, it looks almost like a tree or other thing.
They're kind of ugly, if I may say. They really don't look real. I mean, they kind of look obvious, that that's not a tree, but, I mean, we, they're, they do design them that way.
Thank you, sir.
May I pose a question, too? May I pose a question?
We will not be able to do that. What I'd like for you to do, the two of you can talk while you're, if we start that, we'll have a dialogue and debate, and you...
I'd like to add one more point to, Charles, is one point we, I mean, one thing we could go to, which would be a cleaner look, would be a pole instead of a tree. Were you thinking tree? Because I think I didn't express myself very well on that point, but were you thinking about a tree?
I pulled up one on the internet, it looked like a tree, had a little lamb's like to it, and this was so beautiful. Cell tower.
Right. Yeah. They do make them that way, and I shouldn't call them ugly. They're not, but they do look out of place sometimes. I've seen them, I've even proposed them. But in this particular area, you know, if it was the array on top, that would be, you know, something you're looking at. We do make them where the antennas actually fit inside the pole, so they're no longer protruding out. So, that would be a, a good second Plan B, if you will, for this particular site.
Thank you. Our planning commission, these, the people who will be reviewing that and discussing all of the details, and they can let you know when they're going to be meeting. If you'd like, come and sit in, they'd be glad for you to do that. Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this item? And the, we can, our city clerk, she can, she can give that oath again. I'll swear you in. She's got a lot of them in her. Anybody else like to speak? Okay. If not, we will close the public hearing, and our hardworking planning board, they've got it all, they're sitting here, sir, and these are the people you're sitting them on right here, and one over there. If you'd like to talk to them, they'd be glad to talk. And I want to thank you guys for the hard work and the details that you put into what you do. You make our job easier. That's the way it's supposed to be, isn't it? Thank you. If you'd like to leave, or if you want to sit here with us, we'd be glad for you to stay, but I have a feeling you want to leave. I was right, he won't leave. Mr. Manager, I guess we go to consent agenda?
Mayor and Council, consent agenda items, we had item D through J. We had removed item H, and we had some discussions as to whether you wanted to add a J dot one. So, if you want to add that, you could introduce it that way and add item J dot one, or just approve B through J.
And add item J?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as presented, and add item J one as well.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any comments? Let's discussion. Hearing none, we'll have a roll call vote, please.
Mayor Kane?
Yes.
Mayor President Allen?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilmember Evans?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Ward?
Yes.
Items approved. Thank you. Items require an individual action? We have one?
We have one item. I'll turn that over to Jimmy Rhodes to introduce that.
Okay.
It may be further along.
Item K. Z712 Mathews and Bridges property. The property is located on the northeast corner of North Berkeley Boulevard and Ridge Crest Drive. The request is from Austin Institutional and R16 Residential to Neighborhood Business Conditional District to allow retail uses, including a sit-down restaurant. On April 16, 2012, the council denied this request. The applicant, however, has now included an additional lot in the council waiting six month waiting period as they found that the additional lots substantially changed the circumstances bearing on the application. The subject property is shown here in the process area. This is Berkeley Boulevard, it's shown here on Ridge Crest Drive, and this is Summer Road that's located here. When last considered, the council expressed concern about ingress and egress to the site. NCDOT has agreed to allow the placement of a right-of-way, right-in, right-out curb cut on Berkeley Boulevard, which will be further examined at the time of the site plan approval. The conceptual plan submitted by the applicant now indicates driveway says from Ridge Crest Drive as well as Summer Drive, in addition to right-in, right-out curb cut on Berkeley Boulevard. This is the site plan of the subject property located here. This is Berkeley Boulevard that's shown here. This is Ridge Crest, and this is Summer Road, a drive that's located here. This is the additional lot that they added to, to the plan here. This shows a curb cut going out on Summer Road that's located here. There's also a curb cut here on Ridge Crest and the right-in here on Berkeley Boulevard. This is the parking for the proposed site. This is proposed building that's located here, and this is additional parking shown here on this drive. Two development scenario plans for the site have been submitted. Scenario one shows a 10,000 square foot building containing retail uses which would typically be found in neighborhood and community shopping centers. Scenario two shows a 9,000 square foot business with the 4,500 square foot devoted to the traditional retail and/or ice cream, frozen yogurt, and up to 4,500 square foot devoted to a fast casual full-service sit-down restaurant serving alcoholic beverages. A total of 48 parking spaces are shown on the site plan. A valid protest petition has been submitted, which requires that six outstanding council members vote firmly in order to approve their zoning request. The planning commission at their meeting held on June 25, 2012, recommended approval of the zoning change. At their meeting on July 9, 2012, the council deferred action on this request. The recommendation is by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an order exchanging the zoning for the property from ONI one and R16 Residential to Neighborhood Business Conditional District to allow retail use in a sit-down restaurant, although not entirely compliant with the comprehensive land use plan recommendations. The proposed Neighborhood Business Conditional zoning district would be in compliance with existing zoning on patterns and uses in the general area.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr.?
here on this drive. Two development scenario plans for the site have been submitted. Scenario one shows a ten thousand square foot building containing retail uses, which would typically be found in neighborhood and community shopping centers. Scenario two shows a nine thousand square foot business with the four to five hundred square foot devoted to the traditional retail, and/or ice cream, frozen yogurt, and up to four to five hundred square foot devoted to a fast casual full-service sit-down restaurant serving alcoholic beverages. A total of forty-eight parking spaces are shown on the site plan. A valid protest petition has been submitted, which requires that six out of seven council members vote affirmatively in order to approve their zoning request. The planning commission at their meeting held on June 25, 2012, recommended approval of the zoning change. At their meeting on July 9, 2012, the council deferred action on this request. The recommendation is, by motion, accept the recommendation of the planning commission and adopt an order exchanging the zoning for the property from ONI one and R16 Residential to Neighborhood Business Conditional District to allow retail use in a sit-down restaurant, although not entirely compliant with the comprehensive land use plan recommendations. The proposed Neighborhood Business Conditional zoning district would be in compliance with existing zoning on patterns and uses in the general area.
Thank you. Any questions from Mr. Rowe? If not, we have a recommendation.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion that we accept the recommendation of the planning commission and change this zoning to Neighborhood Business Conditional District.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any more discussion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, lay it be known as an aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose a nay. Motion is carried. I guess that concludes, except, city managers report?
Mayor, I have two items. One, would ask you to take action on, and with the change of our election timeframe, I think it is appropriate for you to set a date for our organizational meeting, and we'd recommend it be August 6. That'll get us through the final tally of the votes, and then we would go ahead and work towards August 6 as being our change for the new council, so if you're willing to set that date, we'd ask you to approve that date.
So, move.
Have a, we have a motion, second? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, lay it be known as an aye.
Aye.
Aye, pose a nay.
Okay, we'll move on that. The second item I'd like to share is just a reminder, we are having a community meeting tomorrow night, which happens to be July 24, 5:30 PM, Goldsboro Chapel Free Will Baptist Church, 1314 Ben Bruington Court. And the primary purpose of this meeting is to listen to ideas on how to end violence in our community. That request was made several weeks ago at the council meeting, and the primary purpose will be for us to listen to the citizens of the community about ideas they have and ways that we can consider and help, and try to work with them in reducing violence, or putting an end to it in our community. So, would encourage anybody who can attend to please come out, again, at 5:30 Tuesday, July 24. We look forward to seeing you there at Goldsboro Chapel Free Will Baptist Church.
Okay. That it?
That's all I have, sir.
Mr. Attorney?
No reporters, ma'am.
Jackie?
I got a question.
Got a question?
Yeah. Is this the last time we're gonna get to speak, or we get to speak at the next meeting?
Speak at the next meeting, right?
Well, by the end of the meeting, I think either would be an opportunity, I think the mayor would probably allow that.
If you, if you want to speak at the next meeting, you can speak at the next meeting.
Well, I'm just, I'm wondering, would it be allowed?
No, yeah, I was assuming that you'd speak next meeting.
Okay, I'll just say that Bob and Patty in my prayers.
Okay, yeah, that's right. Okay. Is that all, Jackie?
Yes, sir.
Next meeting, will...
Yeah.
Charles?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I concur to what Councilman Ward has said concerning Councilman Waller's wife, and she will be in my prayers. And I would like to express my appreciation to the voters of District Four, the trust and confidence they have placed in me, and after the election process is completed, and I'm confirmed for another term, I will continue to give my best. Thank you.
Okay. I'll get you last. Don?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, also, I refer with the other council members about the Waller family, keeping them in our thoughts and prayers, and the other victims of the incident of last Friday, I believe it was. Never know when things like that'll happen, but when they do happen, it's terrible, and just, I'd like to keep all the victims and their families in prayer.
Thanks. Michael?
I too would like to extend my concerns for Councilman Waller and his wife, and I hope that Patty, Pat has a speedy recovery, and that he will return to us at our next meeting. And also what Councilman Chapman talked about, the citizens of Aurora, Colorado, I believe, with the shooting there. It is a sad, sad moment for all of us, and I think it's a time of reflection that we should all keep in mind that, you know, guns don't kill people, people kill people.
Yeah.
And the last thing I'd like to say is to thank the citizens of District One for having confidence and hope in me, and giving me a second term, and as Reverend Williams said, I will work very hard to do my best to serve and honor them in a very respectful and meaningful way. I've had an opportunity to thank some of them personally, but I will get around to most of them, or as many as I can, to thank them individually for giving me their support.
Thank you. Chuck?
Two things, Mayor, I guess we'll follow up with the rest of the council on Bob and Miss Pat, our prayers certainly with Miss Pat, and hope she gets, has a speedy recovery. And also, to the people in Colorado, it's just a tragic thing for our nation, that can happen anywhere, anytime, and that's the scary part about it. And then, following suit with Michael and Reverend, I just want to thank the voters, especially the voters for District Five, I'm very, very appreciative of the ones that went out and voted, and I just very much appreciate that.
I just also want to say to Bob and Pat, we will keep them in our prayers, and wishing them lots of luck. They've had this battle for a little bit, so we're with them. And I too would like to express my appreciation to my supporters, and they're awesome for taking the time to come out and vote. And I promised them a number of things, but I will continue the efforts that I've had over ten years. I have a burning desire to see Goldsboro be all it can be, and I promised them that I will do everything I can to make that happen. I can't do more than that. So, if there's nothing further, please stand in room.